Okay, we're on.
Good morning, this is the Board of Selectmen. This is Friday, March 30th, and Selectmen's Work Session. And I've got a couple items on the agenda this morning. The first one is a review with Mr. Wingate with respect to Wolfborough's RIB. Come on down, Steve.
This is the stuff that...
Yeah.
We could find two more boxes of it out there. Say, very little of this falls into the official notification category. Almost all of this is shared material for Dave Ford. Either copies of something he did, presentations of something he did, or copies of their correspondence with D E S. He's pretty much been in the loop since the...
So when they're permitting, well, sir, I don't know. You probably read the paper. I was over at the Selectmen's meeting the other day. And my concern was that, I've been here since March of 16, and no contact with our board, I'm not saying you, but our board is...
There actually had been.
And who was it?
Let me go through the history a little.
Sure.
So the proposal, the first proposal for the thing was 2006. It was permitted in 2007. Construction was between 2008 and 2009. And then they started to actually use it on April 15, 2009. And it started to break out about five days later, on April 20. And I actually think our consultant was the first one that saw anything, although they said they knew about it. There was a site walk not too long after that, and I can't find anything that documents that. But that's just when I joined the Conservation Commission, and I remember being there. And at least two of the three Selectmen were there.
Yeah, I was there.
I can remember that specifically. I don't remember whether it was 2009. It was 2009.
Right.
During that, my understanding when I joined was the Selectmen had asked the Conservation Commission to monitor this whole thing and keep it on. And there had been quite a bit of correspondence. Only one official reply from D E S was like a two-page answer to questions. And the same D E S representative had been involved in this from the beginning. And he actually wrote the environmental analysis that was required because it was some federal dollars involved in it. And he's still the point guy for D E S on this. So we had that site walk, and I recall also at the time doing reports here for the Selectmen. Because we started a monitoring program to see if there were any effects of 19 Mile Brook. I don't think it was a scientifically valid thing. We were identifying, we were instructed on how to identify different types of algae.
Well, it wasn't professional, I don't think.
Yes. And we were monitoring about five different sites below the breakout every, at least once a week, and identifying these different types of algae to see if there was a change. I did a little research on my own. I think it would have been difficult to have that stand up in court for anything. But we were reporting back, and we were feeling a little militant at the time, I think. And we were encouraging the Selectmen to have a dialogue with the Wolfborough Selectmen and put some pressure on them. Said, you know, it's not fair. You're getting rid of your stuff, but we're accepting it all. That's when Dave Ford started to work with us and share basically everything he knew, everything they developed. When there was something new, he would contact us. So we knew a lot at that time. It took a while, but in May 3, 2010, there was a joint Tuftonboro Wolfborough Special Meeting. It was about the RIB. I have the notes from that in my file. Practically all the dialogue is from the Conservation Commission and Dave Ford. And I remember being there.
Do you remember what came out of it?
Kind of a handshake. Well, that's nice.
And an answer to what?
The Tuftonboro Selectmen accepted what they heard.
That's true.
That you're doing a good job dealing with this terrible situation. And we were a little disappointed. We wanted them to be a little, take a little tougher stance or something.
So after that, what happened?
Well, we worked with Dave, and we looked at the numbers. They were doing a fantastic job of cleaning up. They invested some money in change of process at the treatment facility. And what they were actually putting into the RIB already qualified to come out of the ground by the D E S requirement. The only thing that was, that didn't meet their permit was some of it was going directly into the stream from the side of the hill. You could argue that it had already been treated, but it was creating erosion and putting some sand in the 19 Mile Brook. They didn't try to say that. They just started experimenting with ways to fix it. They first tried things like making little dams to see if that would hold it up enough so it would go back into the soil. And some of it did. But it was still, it was these new springs, you could say, coming out of the side of the hill and going into 19 Mile Brook. Also, the one on the Tuftonboro side, that was the last breakout. That didn't occur until December of 2009. Or at least it wasn't acknowledged in all this paperwork I have until 2009. And I think I remember, we were, the Conservation Commission was conducting, I guess you could say, regular patrols just to monitor what was happening. And then Dave was showing us some of his ideas on how to try to fix it. And then eventually in, oh, in September 2010, they actually did a removal of some of the sand that had migrated to the stream. And they had to get a special emergency permit from D E S for that. I have that in the pile. I think since then, it's been more like when Dave has something new, he lets us know, and then we look at it. And what was it, April 20, 2016? We did a review out there of his rehabilitation proposal that they were submitting to D E S, so...
Is that, I remember going out there once.
You weren't a Selectman then, but you were at that thing.
April of 16?
Yeah, no, I was, yeah.
Okay. I think Lloyd was there.
So that must have been, April of 16 is when we went out. And they were doing some developmental work for a solution, right? They had...
They had a demonstration already set up. And then they were going to actually do that three times once they got the permit. And that included quite a bit of what I would call plumbing on this five to seven acre piece.
Right.
And on the Tuftonboro side.
Were you a part, was our Conservation Commission a party to this permitting process?
Not a party, no.
Even though it's in Tuftonboro?
Yep.
Okay, so that's a shortcoming. April of 2016, I wasn't here. So I'm going to repeat the first question that I posed, which was, while I was a Selectman from last March, a year ago, since that, from that time until now, until the town manager from Wolfborough called and said that they were going to have an eminent domain hearing to take land in Tuftonboro. I had, our board has never been contacted by the Board of Selectmen or Dave Ford or the board, the commissioners or whatever.
I think that's correct.
I know it's correct, but I'm just wondering if you'd been contacted during that period of time?
I wasn't contacted. Actually, we were over for a milfoil meeting, which I think was January.
Yep.
And after that meeting was done, I did, whenever I'm over there, I check with Dave, see if anything moved. And he said, yes, they were negotiating to try to buy this piece of property. Because they were negotiating, he asked me not to pass that information around. So I did, and the other thing he told me, and I wanted to bring this up, make sure I bring this up later. If we have a reason to apply some pressure, a thing we can get out of it is knowing more about what this effluent brings to Tuftonboro. And we, last summer, last fall, Larry Gill, one of our commissioners who has expertise in this area, contacted U.S. Geological Survey, who had been doing some work with higher levels of pollutants that we've never thought about.
We were talking, he was talking about like pharmaceuticals and stuff.
Pharmaceuticals and what we, what's called personal care items. These are chemicals that are put into shampoo, facials, and things like that that are not regulated by anything in the government. And it turns out there's some nasty stuff in there. And pharmaceuticals, there's some scientific evidence that if you put enough of it in a wetland, the amphibians will start producing double legs and, you know, things like that.
I think there is going to be a moment in time when we're going to be able to exert some pressure. And I would certainly hope, and I know you would, bring together your ideas about what kind of pressure the Conservation Commission would like to put on. But when they failed, I mean, and this is just anecdotal information I've got. When they failed, they sued the initial engineering company?
Yep.
And they recovered some money?
Yep, tripled the damages.
Were we ever a party to that?
That's my knowledge.
So the Conservation Commission was never noticed that the suit was going on?
No.
Even though we were perhaps a damaged party?
Nope.
Okay. And do you have any idea how much money they got? Anybody? I don't know.
I think it was in the area of nine million. They didn't get what was awarded because there wasn't that much in the company and their insurance.
But there was a significant millions of dollars.
But the newspaper coverage said they basically tapped them out for everything they were good for. And they put it in an account. It's actually, they've been using that to do some of this work out there.
Yeah, I'm sure they have. But the other part of...
And there is a study that I think is about, I don't know if there's a process that's about to kick off, of what are their alternatives? And that's being paid for by that money. What are their alternatives to the RIB or with the RIB as it is?
Was your understanding that that hasn't already happened? Because I'll just tell you what they told me...
I don't think it's concluded. I haven't seen it.
What they told me at the Selectmen's meeting the other day was that this is the only way it can happen. There are no other alternatives. And, you know, I'm a little concerned about that statement in that there was nothing there to tell me that, they didn't notice it here improperly. Beyond that, there was no factual evidence that says they looked at this, 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 and this, and this is the only way they can go is to take seven or eight acres or five acres or whatever is in Tuftonboro to make this new process happen. They claim the soil, I guess it's the only place in the universe from their mind that they can pump this stuff in. But I know less than a mile away in Caswell's Pit, it's just all gravel. They probably put it over there for like a year. But I'm not certain that they haven't just taken the easiest way. And so our job, I think, is to figure out how to defend Tuftonboro, if you will. And if you weren't a party, or the Conservation Commission, not Steve Wingate, obviously, but the Conservation Commission was not noticed of the permits that were going to happen on Tuftonboro property?
We were not officially noticed because the requirements are to notice the butters. The butters are, we are not, Town of Tuftonboro is not in a butter.
Yeah, but you still have to be, when something of that magnitude, or a subject system, I think, you get some sort of information from the planning board, from Jack or whatever, a shoreline protection issue. You're notified what docks are going to go in or whatever other stuff is happening.
Shoreline and what's called dredge and fill wetland permits. Those, D E S, we were involved in those, but primarily because we act as lakes or witnesses on the ground for that.
Do all the work.
They don't consult us really, other than whether we have objections to it initially.
Yeah, I'm sure they don't consult you because they're not expecting the layperson to have engineering expertise. But you're still, I mean, part of the process within which we live is that we have boards like the Conservation Commission, which take over the responsibility of making sure that we're not doing wetlands.
I think, I think I know where you're trying to go. If I was running the program in Wolfborough, I would be consulting with Tuftonboro.
Well, yeah.
As a matter of conscience. I don't think there is any state requirement that they consult with us.
You know, I'm going to have to disagree because if you're going to put a commercial...
Or at least their state contact hasn't told them to do anything.
If you're going to put a commercial waste disposal site on any property in Tuftonboro, you have to get permitting from Tuftonboro. You have to. That's, I don't care if it's right next door to Wolfborough. But, and further than that, if you've spilled something in Wolfborough and it runs out into Tuftonboro, we're now a party to that spill. We, I mean, they, I mean, you're thinking out of good manners. They should have notified you. I think by law, they have to notify you. That if that, if it were a municipality...
I don't have expertise in that area.
If it were some manufacturing facility, and they had spilled, a D E S would be all over them to notify Tuftonboro. Absolutely. But for whatever reasons. But that wasn't why I brought you here today, anyway. It was, it was more to get a timeline because I didn't feel when I was there in Wolfborough, when they said, "We are fully informed in Tuftonboro", that I as a Selectman had been fully informed. And from what you're telling me, nothing really of substance happened since I began as a Selectman. It was all prior to that.
Yeah.
And were you...
I think I would have, I would have, the first time I saw the word eminent domain was in the paper.
Yeah.
And we were a little disappointed because the other thing that Dave told me was, because his budget was already in, if they did have a chance to pick up this land, he had to find the money in his budget. And it might be what he budgeted to do this partnership with U.S. Geological Survey. And I believe that they were...
And that was to...
They were going to cover 60 to 70 percent of the cost. So it wasn't a big, it wasn't a big dollar item for Wolfborough, maybe. I'm pulling this off the top of my head.
So you're thinking that he feels he needs to own the land for it to be included in the U.S. Geological Survey?
No. No, no connection there.
Okay.
No, he's, his budget was limited.
Right.
And I think he expected to have to pay more than the land was worth.
Oh, they did on the first time?
Yeah, there was going to be a stretch on his budget. I think it was something like that. So he was saying, maybe we have to put that survey out for a year. And the other thing, if you might be going for it, we haven't been in a fighting stance for the Conservation Commission for quite a while. We didn't feel like we were encouraged that way by you, but the cooperation from Dave and the fact that D E S seems to be, have all the decision authority...
Well, they do or they don't. I mean, there's certain other aspects of this whole procedure that are statutory. I mean, there's certain things they don't have authority to do. They may think they do, but the, but I guess, and a good relation with Dave Ford, I suppose, is important. But it's not the deal in the end, though. And he can be a very generous guy and be very informative, or maybe appear to be very informative and maybe not so informative. But the problems that I eliminated to them were, first of all, it's a 93-acre piece of property. It hasn't been subdivided. You don't have the authority in Wolfborough to create a subdivision in Tuftonboro. That has to be done here in Tuftonboro. And then it becomes an industrial site because it's a municipal waste repository. So we've got to go to Z B A. And we haven't even gone to the Board of Tax and Land Appeals to see if they can do eminent domain. And then at the end of it, they were talking about a boundary line adjustment, which I think in their minds was connoting making it a part of Wolfborough, which you can't do without a legislative enactment. So they've got a whole pantload of problems to overcome before they get to the point of designing the system to go there, I think. But I wanted to make sure, and I didn't make any of those, I didn't make any of these questions come up because if I'm uninformed because of my laziness, then shame on me. But if I'm uninformed because nothing happened, then shame on them. They should have been coming to us a long time ago to get us as teammates in this process if they were going to do it, I think. And to your question of militancy, I mean, I think, I'm feeling very militant at this juncture. I don't know if my brothers are, but...
Well, I guess what I would say is, we need to do everything that we can to protect the interests of the Town of Tuftonboro. That's our responsibility.
That's where we can all...
And, you know, I don't, whether militancy is part of this or not, is maybe another question. Dave is a great guy. He's knowledgeable. He wants to do the right thing. His responsibility is to the Town of Wolfborough because that's who he's employed by, even though he lives in Tuftonboro, okay? That's his, that's his first responsibility is to do the best job he can for the Town of Wolfborough. Our responsibility is to protect the interests of the Town of Tuftonboro. And that's where we need to continue to be focused. Whether the rapid infiltration basin should be where it is, draining into Tuftonboro or not is spilt milk, okay? It's there. And even if Wolfborough goes in some other direction besides continuing to use this in the future, you still have the issue of what's, what's happened getting cleaned up. I don't know all the ins and outs of, you know, they got to expand it into Tuftonboro and all the pieces that would happen to get there. But as it exists today, as I understand it, we still have effluent from this system that runs down into the 19 Mile Brook watershed. And sooner or later, some of what comes out on the surface there is going to end up in our lake. Don't know how much is going to get diluted or diverted along the way. So we need to be focused on how do we protect the water quality? And going forward, if they expand this thing with the, obviously, it would be with the blessing of D E S, and it creates additional issues in Tuftonboro, then how's that, how's that get fixed? And, you know, we already have a burden that's been laid on the shoulders of this town by Wolfborough because of where they cited that disposal system. And they, they recognize to a certain extent that it's there and, you know, are sensitive to, yeah, there's something there that's not ideal. But for this town, we need to go beyond the, okay, it's, it's there and, you know, what can you do? I don't know what the right backstops to put in place are going forward to deal with it. But if at some point in time, there has to be a more significant cleanup going forward, then it certainly shouldn't fall on the, as a responsibility on the taxpayers of the Town of Tuftonboro to clean up this, the environmental issues caused by effluent coming across the town line.
And I think to that point, I mean, if we lose on every single step of the way, and they do end up taking this property by eminent domain, which I think is ridiculous, but, and they do put an expansion of a facility there, I think it's imperative for the planning board or any of the boards that are involved to require a significant bond for just that occasion. I mean, Dave Ford was quick to say that this new permit and new system is good for at least 20 years and probably 50 years. Well, that's exactly the same thing that they said when they built the first one, and that failed. So if this one now fails in Tuftonboro, we need some real strong money there to clean it up, if it can be cleaned up. I mean, I'd rather avoid the problem than, you know...
Well, okay, let's, this isn't argumentative. I want to give you some information that's valid to thinking about this. One is the effluent, before it actually goes into the RIB, is already clean enough to meet state standards.
For what?
Well, for the things we know of, the things that we traditionally are concerned about.
So why would they pump it into Lake from Psaki in Wolfborough Bay then?
Yep.
I mean, if it's drinkable.
You can't get a permit for that anymore. But if we, if they had had the site on Wolfborough Bay and were putting effluent in it, they would be able to do that today. They just have to meet the standard. But the standard is kind of behind the science. It's about fertilizing compounds like phosphorus, and it's about biological elements like bacteria. And it's about oxygen content of the water. And those are the things we knew about 30, 40 years ago. Now we're learning about new stuff.
Now, let me just, here. Is the standard for surface discharge different from groundwater discharge?
Yes.
Okay, so it meets the groundwater discharge standard?
I believe it also meets the others.
You think it meets the service water discharge?
Save that question for Dave.
Yep, okay.
I have to, I'm relying on my memory for some of this.
Hang on just a second. Go ahead and finish what you're doing.
Okay, so 19 Mile Brook, if there was someplace in Tuftonboro where you would put a weak effluent... 19 Mile Brook actually is one of the best places because it's a continuous set of wetlands. And it's a slow-moving stream. And right now, the best technology we have for cleaning up pollutants is actually wetlands. It's places where there's a lot of biological activity goes on and the water moves slow enough so that when you take stuff out of the stream, it settles down into the muck and is stored there. And it's usually stored there in a pretty, in a non-polluting cut compound or call weight or something like that. So that's another ingredient there. But we also have the town beach down there. And of course, everybody who lives around 19 Mile Bay. I would like to know what the difference is. Back when this, when the construction was in the process, the Conservation Commission asked for money and got it and hired a consultant to do a study of 19 Mile Brook. We have some baseline data. That's the good news. baseline data. That's the good news. The bad news is it's a one-time set of data. So it doesn't go through the entire season. When the water's high, when the water's low, concentrations change. It would be difficult to use this.
What did that cost? Do you remember?
Uh, maybe thirty thousand dollars, thirty, forty thousand dollars.
And that was for testing the water once or just one season?
Creating a baseline for Nineteen Mile Brook.
For a twelve-month season?
No, it was, it was pretty much one time.
Snapshot?
Yeah. It would've been a lot more expensive to professionally monitor it for an entire season.
Four times?
And it's not a season we're interested in. It's the whole year.
That's what I'm saying. For a whole year, four times as much money, five times as much money?
Don't have any monitoring data other than what Wolfboro has done through an independent consultant.
And what did that cost you, no?
It cost them a lot. And they reduced the, the number of places and the frequency after a while, when they thought they had a good data set.
This is for the whole of Nineteen Mile Brook?
No, this is only for the area that down to 109A.
Okay. And do you have this data?
A lot of it's here.
Okay.
It takes a scientific mind to read it.
Were there conclusions? I think, do they give conclusions?
Yeah, there are conclusions like during low water periods, like in the summer, almost sixty percent of the water flow in that area is actually coming from the RIB. And the water's relatively clean. It's a little higher in what you would call fertilizer compounds, but not much. And sometimes it's actually lower than what you would call the background. They take samples up above where anything is coming in as well.
But that was all an effort on Wolfboro's end to satisfy DES? We didn't require that tasking, did we?
No. But we actually wanted to do more on our end. We made an attempt at one time to line up volunteers to take samples, but that didn't go anywhere. And I don't remember that much about that. I wasn't chairman at the time. And we did this algae thing, which was kind of flaky. When we started talking about, when Larry got involved, we started looking at location. We have some locations lined up where we could do some sampling with volunteers, which wouldn't cause Tuftonboro anything, and try to add it to this.
Just from my perspective, I don't think any testing should cause Wolfboro or Tuftonboro anything anyway, because we're not presenting a problem.
When we, when we talked to Dave about doing this personal care and pharmaceuticals study, he jumped right on it. And I was, I was frankly surprised. You know, what if it got, what if you got negative?